Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for December 14, 2022 to the order. The time is now 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is the roll call of council members. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beeden.
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith.
Here.
Councilmember Macaria is excused this evening. Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Holst.
Here.
Councilmember Molinar.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
All right, thank you. Under Community Comments tonight, item one is a review of emails from the public. I'll ask staff if there were any emails received to communitycomments@mountvernunwa.gov. There were no comments. All right, thank you. Item two tonight is Public Comments. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, you're welcome to step to the podium at this time. If you would just state your name and city president.
My name is Ellen Gamsen. I live in unincorporated Skagit County in the Big Lake area. I work in downtown Mount Vernon as the Director of the Mount Vernon Downtown Association. And I know you guys have a huge agenda to get through with the CIP tonight, so I'm going to make my comments brief. Here is an interested party with regard to the whole design review, standards review process. And I just want to say that I sincerely commend your new Development Services Director for his very thorough review of the status quo and past history and meeting with interested parties. I found him to be very illicit of good content. But I guess I want to just highlight some things that I haven't really specifically heard said that matter to me as you think about this process moving forward. One thing I'd like to say as a member of the Design Review Board is that we have, to date, only reviewed a total of six projects. So we're working with very little actual experience in this process, and every single one of those projects has been greatly different from the others. So we should bear that in mind. Many, many projects get through within the downtown core that are just in the administrative process or working with cities' design consultants and never even make it to the Design Review Board. So that's an important thing to remember as you're thinking about these things. And as Mr. Growth has said, most people feel that high standards are appropriate so that we can retain the character of our community. But the thing that I really feel is important to call to your attention is that, as a member of the Design Review Board, I'm fully aware that those design standards are applied differently to existing construction than they are, would be, to new construction and are to new construction. And very similar to the way building code is written. We have international building code that applies to new construction. International existing building code applies to existing buildings. With the recognition that existing buildings are the greenest buildings and deserve and should be repurposed and kept relevant and with a lifespan for as long as possible. So I do feel like it's important to have strict standards for new construction. We're within less than half a mile of where we are tonight. We can point out examples of things that happen when you don't hold builders to strict standards. But I do feel like review is critical and important, even more important, in existing buildings because you have to apply subjective judgment to those instances where a building built in 1920 is never going to meet the standards of a building that you would expect to be built in 2020. And so you need to allow for pragmatic cost-benefit analysis when it comes to applying those standards. And, you know, for individuals to weigh, you know, okay, does it matter to keep this building new life? Is that more important than requiring a strict, you know, 60% fenestration across the facade? Well, I can tell you about a specific project where we said yes. Yes, we're not going to hold this developer to the fenestration standards because this building is old and we want it to have a life. And we need for the project to be able to move forward in a way that pencils, so that building doesn't just sit empty and become a public menace. So just to remember when you're thinking about how these standards should and could apply, that there is a place for subjective, critical review from caring parties. Thank you.
Right. Any other public comments? I see none. All right, we'll move on. Under our Consent Agenda tonight, there's items A, B, C, and D. Their approval of council meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims, direct deposits, and agreements.
We'll move for approval of our consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Into our reports, for our committee reports, first up is our Public Works Library Committee, and that's Councilmember Gary Molinar.
Okay, we opened up the December 14 meeting at 6:00 tonight, and after the approval of the November 9 meeting minutes, Chris Phillips did some project updates. These are basically project acceptance, things that were talked about tonight, and really it's just kind of a housecleaning issue. A lot of these projects were delayed because of COVID staffing issues and what's happening over the last couple of years. So I'm just going to run down just a couple of, or the list of the project acceptances. College Way widening under I-5, College Way and Riverside Drive signal corridor improvements, College Way and 30th Street signal improvements, Forest Street and Riverside Drive BNSF crossing improvements, 2021 sanitary store sewer lining, 2020 curb wrap improvements and complete streets project. So those are all under acceptance tonight. Then we talked about a professional service agreement with Wilson Engineering for Division Street sidewalk retrofits. And then also talked about sole source purchase with that being Hazel Street Pump Station flight pumps. Next up, Darren Goth, our Development Service Director, talked to us about a Camino contract, and that is going to be for some new software coming our way. Also talked about business license process. We're going to try to streamline the business licenses and try to increase some of the efficiency in time and effort. We also talked about the design standards in the city. We're kind of looking at streamlining some of those, also getting lots of public input on that. And I think just a 20,000-foot look, we obviously think that there needs to be minimum standards that need to be existing in this, but being able to understand some of the impacts of alternatives to a no and just trying to help people do the right thing when they're building their buildings or retrofitting. Let's see. And then for the good of order, Jill just talked about a little bit about AWC action days, which will be on the 15th through 16th of February. We'll close the meeting at 6:35.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Next up is Public Safety Committee Report, and that's Councilmember Mark Holst.
Well, good evening, and thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee meeting was held on December 7. We started off with some capital project reviews. I shouldn't say we started off. It was part of our discussion, some capital project reviews. Assistant Fire Chief Brian Harris gave us some updates on what's going on up at the Ramada Project at Station 3. We've ran into no further concerns up at the area. Trusses have been ordered, maybe on site by now, and that project's moving along nicely and should be done on schedule. And, I'm looking at the fire chief back there, but on budget. And then Mayor Bedrow gave us an update on the Libraries Commons project. Again, that project's moving forward. We've run into no additional snags there, and things are proceeding the way they should be. We had a discussion about our Parks Capital Improvement Plan, which we're not going to refer to as that anymore. It'll now be referred to as our PROS Plan. The PROS Plan stands for Park Recreation and Open Space Plan. We're going through a process now to take a look at what our current park situation is and what the needs are in the future. This could be about a seven-month project where we go through, review where we're at, look at what the growth in the community is going to be, and what the needs are going to be. And we're asking for public input on this. So currently, you can go on to the city website. There's a survey up on the city website. You can fill out that survey, but keep an eye on it because as we move forward, there's going to be some public meetings and different ways for our community to give input on what they're looking for in their parks and recreation requirements. And so we're asking the public to really pay attention to this. Give us feedback. Let us know what the needs are. So we'll be moving forward with that. Again, currently, I think until, is it January 24, the survey's going to be up on the website. So please go in there, fill that out, and that kind of gives us a direction to move as we plan for, going forward. We then heard from our Public Works Director, Chris Phillips. Chris brought us up to speed on some legislative changes that were made in Olympia at the last legislative meeting, or the last legislative session, and has to do with composting ordinance. And that ordinance will be before council this evening, so you get to hear a lot more about that. And we wrapped up the meeting about 7:10.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Next up is our Committee Report for Development Services. That's Councilmember Melissa Beeden.
Melissa. Thank you, Mayor. Now, we're going to go back even further in time, back to November 16, when we held our last full Development Services Committee meeting. And after we initially approved the minutes and after receiving a quick update on the city's ongoing 2022 legislative plan, Director Grow moved on to providing updates on our pending design review study. He presented prescriptive standards to consider, including staff decisions, utilizing the Design Review Board or a combination thereof. Who sets the standards will be key to how the design review process works going forward. Stakeholders, some have included citizens, development professionals, businesses. The interviews, so those interviews, staff input, and working with the downtown design standards will hopefully provide us with additional direction moving forward. After considerable discussion on the topic, Director Grow is bringing back more information. We heard a little bit more tonight. And then, for the good of the order, our HR Director, Erin Kader, gave an overview of health insurance benefits for elected officials as the city is moving over to AWC as a provider for 2023. After that, we adjourned at 7:10 PM.
All right. Thanks very much. Moving on, under Reports, item B is our Councilmember Comments. Any Councilmember comments tonight?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I believe this might be the last council meeting for the year, so I just want to take a quick moment to wish all city residents, city staff, and all our families a happy holiday season ahead. I hope all of you have a wonderful time with your loved ones and stay safe during the season. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
Just follow up on that, too. For those that went to the downtown Christmas parade, it was fabulous. Weather couldn't have been better. Hit a home run on that one, and it was, downtown looks really good this year, the lights.
Special thanks for Ellen being here, for organizing all of that, for the downtown, and also the lights that she helps in the trees every year makes a huge difference. And our parts differ, so thank you. All right. Any other Councilmember comments tonight? All right, thank you very much. Item C tonight is Committee Agenda Request. Any Committee Agenda requests?
I do have one. Thank you, Mayor. I had a resident request, Committee Agenda item, to consider providing portable or permanent restrooms at some of our neighborhood parks. So if we could add that, that'd be great.
Great. I will write that down. Okay. Moving on then, there's no unfinished business tonight. Under New Business, item A is a public hearing regarding the 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvements Plan. Peter Donovan, our project development manager is here for this item. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Hey, great news for all of you, and that is you all made the cover of this year's CIP. Did you see the photo here? Congratulations on that, and you can expect those royalty checks to be streaming in. And you can get a down payment for one of those golden shovels that you're holding there. Okay, so the CIP document is a planning document. It asks each department to look out six years and plan for capital needs that they might have. Each department representative is going to be here tonight to talk with you about their top two priorities. These can all be found in the CIP. The CIP, by the way, for the public's benefit, that's a free document, and the shovels were spray painted. Here is Chief Brian Bryce to talk about the fire department's top two priority projects.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks for standing so close.
My pleasure. You wanted us to move it along. So two projects that are top two. You've seen these before, and we'll start with Fire Station 1. The short version of this was built in 1964. It's out-served its usefulness. We have apparatus that can't fit in there. We have not enough spacing for our crews that are there. It needs to be redone. We've done a study on this and have put that into our capital improvements. You can see a couple of renderings of that, and so look forward to that coming back again at a later date. The other project, happy to report, is our Fire Station 2 that is in our CIP. It's been in there for a while now. That is slated to begin in next year, and we do have a funding mechanism for that. There's a rendering drawing there of that. What has fallen off from the years previous is Fire Station 3 that is currently in process and should be completed in the April-May timeframe. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about our top two projects.
Any questions for our chief? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Chris Phillips, your Public Works Director. The top two items for us are dealing with infrastructure improvements, which have been a continuing process here. And these are improvements to our facilities' infrastructure to include City Hall, Police Court Campus, Public Works Avenue, Building, Library, and a variety of items here dealing with our roofing, generators, HVAC equipment, plumbing, and other energy-efficient upgrades. And our second topic is dealing with the Lincoln Theater and Kincaid Holdings. Again, city owns one square block of historic downtown Mount Vernon. It basically starts on Second Street, heads west to First, and then along First Street to about half a block down there where Lincoln Theater is. Facility structural improvements there include work to foundations, roof and facades, as well as mechanical plumbing, HVAC, earthquake retrofit, and other interior renovations. And pending your questions.
Any questions for Chris on these general facilities items? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mary Thomas, IS Implementation Manager. I'm here to present on the one project that we have, which is our SAN storage for our virtual servers. It is funded. What it does is we set money aside annually to pay for replacement of our SAN storage that we have. We move it through a process so that it's in a three-year cycle where we replace it in three years. We push over to another, so that we're getting rid of the oldest part of our SANS first. So we're making sure that we get all the goodie out of all of it.
All right. Questions for Mary on the SAN storage for virtual servers? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Up next is the library, and we have one project that you may or may not have heard of called the Mount Vernon Library Project Commons. It is the first-ever mega-charging, complete charging solution that is basically just a lovely dreams factory for the city residents. And it has almost all of its funding, but we're still working on the last little bit. Any questions about this project?
Where's Elliot?
Ah, he is at home, but we have another video we're working on right now.
Very good. Need to keep people engaged.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Isaac.
Parks and Recharge Services, we have two projects. First and foremost is our Hillcrest Lodge renovations. So what we'll be doing here is, you can see there's two pillars, there's actually three pillars, two there in the pictures where there is some deterioration that is happening. We've had it inspected. It is not due to termites or bugs, but just old age. And so we are going to be looking at needing to replace three of those, as well as the doors need to be redone and the windows. So first and foremost, getting the structure taken care of. If there's any money left over, then we'll be going and doing the doors and the windows. And there'll be more to come in future years, but that's probably all we can afford this year. Second project is Edgewater Park improvements. This is one that we've discussed before. We weren't able to move that project along this year just due to, we did a lot of work with the engineering staff to get it to where it needed to be to actually go out to bid. So we'll be going out to bid this coming year with that project, and that's to repair the nine, or replace the nine panels that are out there. You can kind of see some of the lovely handiwork that we have out there, and we need to secure it better so it's safer and just aesthetically looks better as well. Any questions on those two?
Any questions for Jennifer on this? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Chris Kamik, the good branch of public safety. Not to be confused with my brethren over there. Police Department has two projects on the horizon there that are need. This is our evidence building. It's our external evidence building site. Over the years, court rules have changed where pretty much required anymore to do search warrant processes. So rather than being able to do field searches on vehicles, that means bringing vehicles back to our storage site to do that processing here. And that processing can take anywhere from an hour immediately when it's done to several days. So we average about 73 vehicles right now a year that we impound as it is and have to process, and there's other activities that go on. So this is not a funded project. It's just projecting for the need to have expansion to our evidence facility in the future. Oops, wrong way. The other project you're very familiar with, I've been here before on it, it's Incident Command Vehicle that would be shared asset between us and the fire department and available. And this is our previous vehicle we surplus a little over six years ago, I believe. It was 35 years old at the time. This just provides us the ability to basically take the building space that we have here and have it available to us out in the field with communications and shelter and the ability to manage critical incidents. We do have a full design, a shovel-ready design, if you will, when funding comes along. So I'll take any questions you might have on that.
Any questions?
I just had one.
Mark, go ahead.
Chief Kamik, it seemed to me that maybe a few years ago, we did some sort of an expansion on the evidence room. Do you recall anything like that? I remember we had a long conversation about the evidence room when Jerry was still chief. It seemed like we did some kind of an expansion or redesign in there. Maybe I'm just, maybe it was just a discussion back then. Maybe it never happened.
I don't recall, Councilmember, to be honest with you. I can check back with him and see what we did. I don't recall.
Really doesn't matter. We need more space, right?
Oh, well, wait a minute. We did expand on the side, the animal control and the sheltering on the west end.
Maybe that's what it was.
We did do that.
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
I thought we'd done something with that building a few years ago.
Yeah, we did do that extension, but we didn't do it on a evidence piece of it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I thought about getting really close to the chief there, try to expedite things going, but a well-armed officer with a gun, I thought, nah, maybe I just won't do that tonight.
I'd be more concerned about the taser.
The storm system restoration program, that is one that's always a favorite of mine because it keeps us out of a lot of trouble. I thought I'd go back this last year and take a look at how many miles of video inspection we have done since we started. This has been exactly 10 years, and we have 16 and a half miles of video inspection we have done in that 10 years. And we have only lined the worst of the worst pipes, and we have done one and three-quarters miles of pipe lining in that time, which means we have eliminated one and three-quarters miles of problems for us. So yes, I'm very pleased with this program, and that's why I have highlighted it many times. It's bread and butter, and it keeps us out of a lot of trouble with pipes collapsing on roads and such. So. The Park Street Pump Station, we are going to start doing the project engineering, the PE on that this year. We're going to spend $100,000 to start doing that. It's an 80-year-old pump station. The wastewater treatment plant staff does an excellent job of keeping that infrastructure humming and working well, but it is in need of an upgrade. So we are looking at getting that done. Next year, we will have another $200,000 in the budget, and then I have slotted $27 million. We really won't know until we finish the project engineering what it's going to be for cost, so we'll have a better idea of the time and cost at the point we get the project engineering done. So those are the two I have.
Any questions for Blaine on those items? All right. Moving on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council again. Chris Phillips, Public Works Director. Top two projects to discuss this evening are the Riverside Drive improvements. You've already approved a portion of design work here. This is a reconstruction of Riverside Drive with boulevard improvements to include pedestrian, a variety of amenities, streetscape and landscape, the undergrounding of utilities, and improving lighting, and access control. And the next I have for you, again, is something that you're very familiar with, is the Hogola Venture Intersection improvements. Here we have an installation of eight-phase signal to increase the capability by allowing long queues to empty into a controlled fashion rather than crossing one at a time. Sidewalk connections will also be upgraded to ADA standards. Pending your questions.
Any questions for Chris on these two highlighted transportation projects? All right, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Gary Doranzo from the Wastewater Utility. Our top two projects are, the first one is the garage shop building. It's going to be a 40-by-100-foot building. It's going to have four bays in it that we will be storing equipment in, and it's going to have one fully enclosed wash bay to wash the equipment that we're pulling out of wet wells and different equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. The four open bays, the four bays is going to have storage for equipment that we've been getting over the years. As the city grows, so does our inventory of equipment, and we like to keep it in good condition, and we help do that by keeping it inside out of the elements. Our second project is the sewer restoration program, and it's real similar to the stormwater one that Blaine just discussed with you, and it's basically the least intrusive way to help maintain our sewer infrastructure for years to come, and also works on helping keep our manhole grouting and our manholes up to grade. So with that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Questions for Gary? All right. Thank you, Gary.
Yep. We always appreciate Gary's sewer restoration photos that made the cut, and we're especially appreciative of Gary for having the foresight to edit some of those photos and not put them in the presentation. That is our 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvements Plan overview. Again, this year's plan has been reviewed by Mayor Bedrow and by her staff. The Washington State Department of Commerce has taken a look at this. The Mount Vernon Planning Commission has also looked at this at their meeting last Tuesday. All of those groups have approved and recommended this plan to council. And so at this time, staff is recommending that council would also approve the Capital Improvements Plan following a public hearing. And any questions?
All right. Any questions for Peter before we have the public hearing? All right. With that, we'll open the open record public hearing for the 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Is there anyone wishing to speak about this plan? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close our public hearing. This would be Ordinance 3861 if council chooses to take action tonight.
I would move the adoption of Ordinance 3861.
All right. Second. Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Mayor, may I say I'm so appreciative of the highly choreographed presentations?
Very efficient.
They were very efficient and well done. Thank you.
As our next agenda item is coming forward, just a reminder, on our website, mountvernunwa.gov, you can find the entirety of the Capital Improvement Plan for your viewing pleasure. All right. Item B tonight is a closed-record public hearing regarding a non-conforming structure, and Rebecca Lowell from our Development Services Department is here for this item. Rebecca. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The item I have before you this evening is asking for approval of a resolution to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. By way of just a brief overview, this project was submitted to the city after our staff was informed that we had a structure that was built without benefit of city permits. And what the applicant will be doing here is converting this existing structure into a covered porch. The existing mobile home is classified as non-conforming because its setbacks are not code compliant. The structure is located at 1400 North 30th Street. It is Unit 170. That is within the Skagit Valley Mobile Manor. You can see on the vicinity map that I have here, I've highlighted where the site is within this mobile home park, which is on the east side of North 30th Street and south of College Way. This next slide I have just gives you an aerial view of the location of this site. I've got the two arrows on each side to show you where it is located within the park. And then you can see an image here on the right of the addition that was added on to this existing mobile home that will be converted from this addition into a covered porch should this approval be granted tonight. On November 16th, an open record public hearing was held before our hearing examiner, and the examiner recommended approval of this application. There was no request for reconsideration of the examiner's recommendation when it was distributed, following, receiving it. And as such, staff is recommending council follow the hearing examiner's recommendation and move to adopt a resolution approving the expansion of the subject non-conforming structure.
All right. Any questions for Rebecca on this particular item?
So I was just kind of looking at some of those photos, Rebecca, and it appears that there may be some other of these mobile homes that are in there that have similar structures.
Correct.
So basically, it doesn't change the landscape of, of the neighborhood because there are other structures there that, that are similar.
We will, we have one other application that's very similar to this that will be before council in the next few months. It's actually going to the hearing examiner, the first part of, or no, excuse me. Yeah, the first part, January 5th, I believe. It will be there. So, and it looks, it's sort of a similar fact pattern. And there are a number of these other additions that have unfortunately happened over time. Our building official and code enforcement officer became aware over a year ago of a number of these types of structures that were being built without permits. Of course, it's a life safety issue. So they did go through that park and issued stop work orders on a number of properties. And we have been working to bring a number of these to be code compliant. So.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Rebecca?
Just say, for the public benefit, I think a lot of people are unaware, you know, that when they need a permit and when they don't need a permit. And I find out that there's, usually permits are needed. I mean, for anything other than taking out the trash, you should call and find out how, what you need from the city department. And I do know that there was, I remember, a fire in one of these mobile home parks last year in one of these structures. And so it can be very dangerous. So we just want people to be safe and consult with the planning department, know when you need those permits.
Absolutely. And our department has gone through and contacted a handful of other mobile home parks and have spoken to the managers. And we've been pushing out information with regard to that issue. We'd much rather catch them upfront than later on like this one.
This would be a resolution. The number would be 1021. Council, oh, wait, we have to close our public hearing. Okay. With that, any other questions for Rebecca before we do the hearing? All right. We'd like to open the closed record public hearing for the Chavez's Request for Special Permission. Plan number is 22-0153. Anyone wishing to speak, which would be part of the record. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing regarding this item. All right.
I have a question.
Sure.
There, there is some penalty, but that this person is going to need to pay, I'm assuming.
Correct. There was a rather, and you'll probably saw the exhibit that was.
I read through it, and I was just curious about.
Yeah, that was in the record. Our department had been in touch with a number of these property owners for well over a year and had sent a number of notices of violation and had no response. So at a certain point, we, our city attorney's office helped us, helped our department draft, kind of the next step up in your code enforcement process. And they had some pretty steep fines. The intent was never to collect those fines, but to get people's attention. And also what those notices said was, if you come in, we want to work with you. We just want to, we want to make these structures safe. And in exchange for coming in and doing that, those fines were reduced to a fraction of what they were. So.
Okay. I mean, I just, people need to understand that it's not, this is important. We're not trying to be awful. We're, we just want you to be safe and do things the right way. So thank you for that, Rebecca.
Yeah. And education's our, you know, first, first action. So it's always better to ask upfront.
All right. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 1021. Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Melissa and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right. Item C tonight is an approval of an agreement with Skagit County. Our Finance Director Doug Velasquez is here with this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Each year, the City of Mount Vernon budgets for and provides funding to Skagit County for their senior services program within the Department of Public Health for services provided to our senior community. These services include nutritional services and operational support for the Mount Vernon Senior Center. The city has committed $58,005 of financial support to Skagit County for the provisions of services to our senior community for 2023, which is included in the adopted 2023 city budget. An interlocal agreement between our two agencies needs to be approved to confirm the city's funding commitment. The 2023 budget for senior services represents a 1.5% increase from 22 to 23. The staff recommends council authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement.
All right. Any questions for Doug?
I'll motion for the approval of the interlocal agreement with Skagit County for the provision of senior services for the year 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Juan and a second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item D tonight is a 2022 budget amendment. And again, Doug Velasquez, our Finance Director. Go ahead.
Thank you. So it's that time of year, just to kind of finish up with our year-end when doing some, an ordinance to amend the 22 budget document, excuse me. So just going down the list here, the 2022 budget amendment includes the following. The general fund requires an increase in appropriated revenue and expenditures of about $250,000 to account for increased public safety sales tax and also the corresponding transfer to Skagit County. The government access fund requires an increase in appropriated expenditures in the amount of $50,000 to account for some remodeling that was done and also air conditioning replacements here in this building. The fund reserves will be used to offset that, this cost. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund, ARPA, requires an increase in appropriation of $2.5 million. $500,000 of this is included, was included, we talked about earlier, were 2021 budgeted items that were rolled over for computer and HVAC equipment, and also a $2 million to, for a transfer to the Library Commons Project. So here, there was a $4 million transfer is included in the 2023 budget, but just based off timing of some of the invoices that are coming in and some of the funding issues, I'm, we're asking for a $2 million of that to be budgeted in 2022. The Library Commons Fund, as you know, when, we didn't really know how much we were going to be, how fast we were going to be moving on this. And we only had about $1.7 million budgeted in that fund. So now we need to increase the appropriation by about, of $3,250,000 for payments of professional services and construction costs. This is estimated amount for 2022 associated with a contract from Leitig Construction approved by council on September 7th, 2022, and other related costs. This will be offset with the $2 million that we just talked about, transfer from ARPA, a $250,000 transfer from TBD, which was included in, well, and, and the $100,000 transfer from REIT and use of, of the reserves. So this, the reserves of the 301, of the Library Commons Fund, not REIT Fund. I should have made that more clear. These transfers were included in the funding plan that we went over with the, for the Library Commons Project. The Transportation Benefit District, TBD, needs an additional $250,000 for the, for that transfer to the Library Commons Project as discussed above. And also, the REIT I needs additional $100,000 for the transfer to the Library Commons Project. Also, the fire stations project, we didn't have funding at all for that in the funding, for this year, except for $1.4 million for a ladder truck payment. So we need an appropriation of about $1.5 million for expenditures related to the remodel of Fire Station 3. This is an estimated amount for 2022 associated with a contract with Trico Construction approved by council on June 9th, 2022. This is offset with an increase in budgeted revenues of $1.5 million from the fire bond proceeds. And lastly, the Public Works Fund needs an appropriation of about $20,000 for the payment of retainage release for the maintenance shop canopy addition, addition construction. And funding will come from those funds reserves. So as these increases in expenditures were not included in the 2022 adopted budget, this budget amendments are necessary to complete and properly record these expenditures. All listed funds have available funding for these expenditures. So city staff is requesting council to approve Ordinance 3862 to amend the 2022 adopted budget.
All right. He saved, Doug saved them all up for the end of the year. Is there any questions for Doug?
No, I'd just like to make a comment for the, for the public's sake. You hear of all these different revenues and all these different expenditures and, and increases in budget. We're, council's brought up to speed on this almost on a weekly basis. We're the ones that are making these decisions to, to spend this extra money and, and look at the revenue. So it's not just at the end of the year, we're doing a house cleaning and, and getting everything taken care of. We've actually been through the whole process throughout the course of the year. Council's all weighed in, asked the questions, and has given staff the approval to go ahead and make these expenditures. And then we just clear it all up at the end of the year. So the balance, the budget's balanced.
Great. All right.
Mark covered it well. Thank you.
All right, great. All right. This would be Ordinance 3862 as presented.
Move for approval of Ordinance 3862.
Thank you. Second. Motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. All right. Let's see. Item E tonight is an approval of an agreement with the Skagit Watershed Council. That's why Doug's still standing there.
Thank you again. All right. So during the 2023 budget process, the Skagit Watershed Council applied and was awarded $1,500 from the Tourism Promotion Fund. Per RCW, Councilmember Brock Smith has a remote interest in the agreement as an employee of Skagit Watershed Council. A remote interest still allows council to approve the contract following the procedure set forth in statute. Pursuant to RCW 42.23.40, the agreement must be approved by the council after Councilmember Brock Smith discloses the extent of his interest, which shall be noted in the minutes and abstained from the vote of the agreement. So staff is requesting that council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Skagit Watershed Council for the receipt of the 2023 lodging tax funds.
All right. Thank you. I'll turn the mic over to Councilmember Brock.
Thank you. And for the record, and for anybody who doesn't know, I'm the executive director of the Skagit Watershed Council. We work with several other groups to host a fun event called the Illuminite Winter Walk in the last Friday of January. And so there's a bit of money in here to support those partners to do that. I'm personally on fixed wages, won't benefit directly by any of this, but regardless, I would like to recuse myself and won't hold it against any of my peers if I voted yes on this.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Doug on this particular item?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with the Watershed Council.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Any abstentions?
Juan.
All right. Thank you. With that, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. All right. Item F tonight, approval of an agreement with Skagit County. And Isaac Huffman, our library director, is here for this item. Isaac?
Hello. Every year, the library has an agreement with Skagit County to pay for library fees of those unincorporated residents in Skagit County. We charge a fee, but they also supplement that fee with an agreement. This year, we are receiving slightly more at $13,701, which is good because it means that our library has more circulation than the other libraries in Skagit County than comparatively to last year. And so I make a motion that we should approve this agreement and receive this funding.
Okay. Any questions for Isaac on this particular item?
If I hear no questions, I'll motion for the approval of the interlocal agreement with Skagit County.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Juan and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Isaac. Item G tonight is the approval of a resolution. This is for equipment surplus and disposal. Mary Thomas is here. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. So I'm here to present on an authorization to surplus our broken and no longer useful computer, computer equipment. And this equipment is from all of our departments. So it's fiber, IS services, net ops, and TV10. And so the last time that we did a recycling was, from my understanding from Kim Kleppi, was 2019. So we've accumulated a great deal of it, which is in the pages attached. So I'm asking that, that we be able to have a professional recycling company come in and pick it up and take it away.
All right. Any questions for Mary on this particular item?
If I hear no, I'll motion for the approval of a resolution.
1022.
1022, declaring item surplus from IS.
All right, thank you. Second. Motion by Juan, second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Item H tonight is the approval of agreement with Camino Software Contract. Darren Growth, our Development Services Director is here. Darren?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As we discussed in the committee, this hopefully is a housekeeping item to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement with Camino. It's a development inquiry software. We have the money and the technology fee that Development Services has to help pay for this software. And we hope to get it implemented in up, start the implementation in January. So just looking for an agreement or a motion to execute the agreement.
All right. Questions for Darren on this particular item?
No, I'd like to thank Darren for bringing this before council. It's been a couple of months ago that you brought it to us, brought somebody in to give us kind of a demonstration on how this works. It looks like it's going to be really beneficial for the homeowner that's wanting to do a small project. We're going to speed up that application process, kind of tells them what they have to do without having to make phone calls. And they can basically get everything done right online. So it's going to add a lot of efficiencies to our office, but it's also going to be really beneficial for the homeowners that wants to do a do-it-yourself or project. So appreciate you bringing that forward. And I would move for the adoption of the agreement with Camino.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Darren. Item I tonight is the first of many items that Public Works Director Chris Phillips will present. First up is the project acceptance for the 2020 curb ramp improvements project. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next nine items are going to be from public work. So again, I apologize upfront, but this is a factor, as we mentioned during committee, due to COVID, some contractor work, as well as some other things that working internal with staff. So the first project I have for you is the 2020 curb ramp improvement program. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Trinity Contractors Incorporated on the 2020 curb ramp. Approximately 100 street corners were worked on during this particular project. Work included demolishing sidewalks, ramps, curb ramps, gutters, and installing accessible curb ramps, sidewalks, pedestrian curbs, traffic curbs and gutters, detectable warning surfaces, and restoring pavement and landscaping and retrofitting curb ramps with detectable warning surfaces. The award was The award was approved by council on September 23, 2020, in the amount of $476,280. It was completed on April 15, 2022, and in accordance with the plans and specifications, final adjusted project amount was $517,503.13. Staff recommends accepting the work performed by Trinity Contractors for the 2020 curb ramp improvement project.
All right. Questions for Chris on this particular item?
I have no questions.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Trinity Contractors.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Melissa and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item J tonight is the project acceptance. This is for the College Way and 30th Street intersection. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Larry Brown Construction for the construction of the College Way 30th Intersection Signal Project. This project was awarded on June 27, 2019 for the amount of $805,546.20. The project improvements included a new eight-phase traffic signal, enhanced intersection lighting, and a right-turn taper, improved sidewalks, and ADA ramps and storm water upgrades. Project completion was achieved on October 20, 2020. In accordance with the plans and specifications, the final adjusted contract amount was for Staff recommends accepting the work performed by Larry Brown Construction for the construction of the College Way and 30th Intersection Signal.
All right, questions for Chris on this item?
I'd move to approve the, I just popped it off my screen.
Larry Brown Construction.
Larry Brown Construction for the, construction of that College Way 30th Intersection.
Second. Motion by Gary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item K, project acceptance for the 2021 sanitary and storm sewer lining project. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Incitiform Technologies LLC on 2020, for the 2021 sanitary and sewer lining project. The project included approximately 9,444 feet of sanitary sewer pipe and approximately 2,073 feet of stormwater pipe with a cured in-place pipe CIPP liner system. The project was awarded in October 13 of 2021 for the amount of $695,293.47. Physical completion was achieved on September 30, 2022 in accordance with plans and specifications. Final adjusted project amount was $675,629. Staff recommends accepting the work performed by Incitiform Technologies LLC for the 2021 sanitary and storm sewer lining project.
All right. Questions for Chris on this item?
I'd move that council approve the work performed by Incitiform Technologies for stormwater and sanitary lining project.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving right along. Item L, project acceptance for the College Way SR 538 at I-5 Lane Capacity Improvements Project. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Granite Construction Company on College Way, State Route 538 widening at I-5 project. Project constructed two additional travel lanes beneath I-5 at College Way interchange. The project included excavation beneath I-5, typeback retaining walls, two new traffic signals, new stormwater force main adjacent to Freeway Drive, PUD waterline improvements on College Way, stormpipe, curb, sidewalk, and asphalt pavement. The project was awarded on October 1, 2018 for $6,707,000, or $10864.74. Physical completion was achieved on July 1, 2020 in accordance with plans and specifications. Final adjusted project amount was $8,459,341.34. Staff recommends accepting the work performed by Granite Construction Company for College Way widening at I-5 project.
All right. Any questions for Chris?
I'd just add that we ran into some retaining wall issues, and that really drove our costs up from the $6 million to the $8 million. Council was aware of that the whole time that was going on, and we approved those expenditures. Just so the public knows, there's a reason why we saw such an increase, and it had to do with the ground that we were working with in that area. In order to make it safe, we had to, we had to spend a little extra money, and we were able to find the funding to do that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Before I call for a vote, adding on to that, thanks, Mark, for pointing that out, because people might be listening in like 2020, what are we doing? But this project was actually, the city headed it, but it involved the state, it involved federal highways. So in order to close projects out, it has to be closed out at those levels as well, so it does take some time to do that. And then the state was very generous in helping us with those extra overruns. So anyway, just a little explanation if folks are listening to what we're doing here on the campus. All right. Is there a motion to accept this project completion?
So I'd move that we accept the work performed on the College Way Riverside improvement, lane improvement.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mark, a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item M, project acceptance for the North Fourth Street Riverside Drive Burlington Northern Sennife Railroad Crossing. Chris.
Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by JAG Corporation on the North Fourth Riverside Drive BNSF Railroad Crossing Improvement Project. This project was in partnership with BNSF Railroad. Work included realigning the roadway, sidewalk, curb to match two new rail crossing systems at the BNSF Main Line Track and the BNF Sidetrack immediately south of the Main Line Track. BNSF installed new LED signal lights, pedestrian bell on the northeast signal mast, a new bungalow signal controller, and pedestrian gates at the rail crossing to alert oncoming of oncoming trains. The project was awarded on June 20, 2019 in the amount of $473,255.55. Physical completion was achieved on March 23, 2022 in accordance with plans and specifications, with the final project amount being $432,556.83. Staff recommends accepting the work performed by JAG Corporation for North Fourth Street and Riverside Drive BNSF Railroad Crossing Improvement Project.
All right. Questions for Chris?
I'll move that we accept the work performed by JAG Corporation for the North Fourth Street Riverside Drive BNSF Railroad Crossing Improvements.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mary and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item N, the project acceptance for College Way and Riverside Drive Signal Corridor Improvements. Chris?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to accept the work completed by Calorucio Brothers on the College Way and Riverside Drive Corridor Signal Improvement Project. The project installed yellow flashing left turn signals, LED light upgrade, ADA upgrades, which included curb ramps, push button, and countdown pedestrian signals at 12 intersections on College Way and Riverside Drive. The improvements provide congestion relief, safety, and accessibility increases. The project was awarded on June 26, 2019 in the amount of $1,449,514. Physical completion was achieved on February 2, 2021 in accordance with plans and specifications. Final adjusted project amount was $1,539,671.62. Staff recommends accepting the work performed by Calorucio Brothers for the amount of, oh, I'm sorry, for the College Way and Riverside Drive Corridor Signal Improvement Project.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Chris?
I'd move that council approve the work performed by Calico Construction for the Riverside Drive College Way signal light improvement.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. That completes all of our project acceptance, and we're going to clear out so much paperwork, it's amazing. So thank you, council. Item O tonight is the approval of a resolution for a sole source purchase, and again, Chris has this item.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So staff recommends declaring Whitney Equipment Company Incorporated as a sole source and giving the mayor permission to purchase the flight submersible pumps from Whitney Equipment Company Incorporated. The pumps are located at Hazel Street Pump Station located at South 7th and East Hazel Streets. These pumps, a total of two, are approaching the end of their expected service life and will require replacement within the next one to five years. It's typical practice to replace pumps before they reach the serviceable life threshold and risk experiencing a critical failure. So in order to mitigate that, we would desire to purchase these pumps. Because the pump manufacturer has a rather lengthy lead time, in some cases up to 10 to 12 weeks, Public Works is requesting the purchase of a total of three pumps to have in stock and have readily available when it becomes necessary to replace the pumps as part of the maintenance cycle. Total cost for these pumps would be $36,893, including tax, and staff recommends motion to approve the mayor to purchase three pumps, submersible implement pumps declaring Whitney Equipment Company Incorporated a sole source supplier in the amount not to exceed, and here's the correction, $36,893, including shipping and tax.
All right. Questions for Chris on this item? This would be a resolution as far as action goes, and it would be Resolution 1023.
If I hear no questions, I'll motion for the approval of Resolution 1023.
Two, three.
Two, three.
Second.
All right. Motion by Juan and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item P is the approval of an agreement with Wilson Engineering LLC. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends entering into a professional services agreement with Wilson Survey and Engineering for engineering and design services for the Division Street Sidewalk retrofit project. This project consists of designing new curb ramps at 10 specific intersection corners on Division Street, and we'll call these Tier One Scope, to comply with ADA requirements, and analyzing road pavement slopes adjacent to the curb returns, and modify pedestrian push buttons when required. Storm drainage and catchments may also need adjustment to accommodate modifications in the intersection geometry. The scope of the work also included 11 additional locations, which we'll identify as Tier Two, where there are minor issues that merit some level of corrective action. Public Works is proposing to complete the topographic survey and preliminary design of the Tier Two locations and evaluate if any of these locations should be included in the final construction package. If the design is made to include any of these locations, the full design at these ramps, which would be part of Task Four, would be added to the Wilson Scope of Work through a contract amendment, which we would bring back to council. The scope of the work for this design effort will include Tier One, Task One through Four, in the amount not to exceed $139,248, and Tier Two, Task One through Three, in the amount not to exceed $52,040 for a contract amount of $191,288. Motion, city staff requests council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilson and Survey and Engineering for engineering design services on the Division Street retrofit project in an effort not to exceed $191,288.
All right. Questions for Chris?
Just had a quick question. Is our funding source for this through our Transportation Benefit District?
Yes. Listen, this is Councilmember Holst.
I'll make a motion, council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilson Survey and Engineering.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Melissa. We'll give a second to Mark. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item Q, it's an approval of an ordinance. This is for compost procurement requirements. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. So this case, the city staff is requesting a motion that the city council adopt and vote for the proposed attached ordinance. I'll go briefly through this as we did during committee. There are three elements to this particular ordinance that the public, as well as council, should be aware. The first is dealing with a planning of government-funded projects, and to the maximum extent possible to follow this particular RCW. And this is basically pertaining to any type of new development that would come through Director Growth's Department in Development Services. The second part of this deals with an education facet, so this is one where the city will develop strategies to inform residents about the value of composting. We have something similar that's out there now, but we'll make it a little bit more robust. That squarely is in the Public Works Department within the Solid Waste Division, that we'll be, we'll be taking care of that. And then there's a variety of metrics that the state recommends that we follow, which again would have a follow-up to council or brief back to council. I would say that probably on a semi-annual basis, and Councilmember Hudson, you brought this up in committee, that we'll do this. The three areas that they recommend, and there may be more as we begin to work through this process. One is taking a look at the total tons of organic material that is diverted each year. That would be something that our Solid Waste Division would monitor. And then we've got two other areas for metrics. One is dealing with the volume and cost of compost purchased each year. That would be probably a joint effort between Public Works and my esteemed colleague from the Parks Department there, Jennifer Burner, that we would be watching that as we are utilizing that composting material in those areas. And then a third deals with sources for composting, and in this, it talks about using companies that produce this type of product locally. So that, in essence, is what the state is requesting us to do, easy enough to make that happen. What the city staff is requesting is that you adopt the ordinance that satisfies the state law requirements, pending your questions.
Great. Questions for Chris? Again, just in a nutshell, it's the state mandating that we do this, so.
I'll move for approval of ordinance number 3863.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Mary, second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Nice run there, Chris. All right. Item R tonight is an approval of an agreement with Skagit County, and this is Chief Chris Kamik.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm here to request that council authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Skagit County for the financial support that provides for our law enforcement embedded social worker. In 2016, the City of Mount Vernon and Skagit County Human Services entered into an interlocal agreement that would fund embedded social worker within the police department. The agreement includes two-thirds of the funding for this position not to exceed $60,000, and then $12,000 for flexible spending on programming supplies and ongoing technical assistance. This agreement currently expires December 31, 2022, and we're just looking for renewal of the same agreement for 2023.
All right. Questions for Chris?
So I'd move that council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with Skagit County to provide the embedded social worker.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to Skagit County for that partnership. Item S tonight is an agreement with Skagit County, and our city attorney, Kevin Rogerson, is here for this item. Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Before it was a cooperative agreement, it's actually three parties. Leidig, who's your general contractor for the Library Commons, ourselves, and Skagit County. What this is doing is it's a cooperative agreement that recognizes that there's going to be temporary displacement of parking that the county quite recently used to use, which is the site of your Library Commons, and that parking was used largely by the Superior District Court-related functions. The county also owns some property over on 100 West Broadway, which is further defined by parcel number in the agreement. Basically, what this is, is an agreement that the county will allow us to continue to use that property at 100 West Broadway for a lay-down easement, a temporary construction easement to the benefit of Leidig, to lay down materials and provide an office space, and in return, that the city will reserve certain areas of streets in the near vicinity for county employees and court functions, basically employees and jurors. The areas are defined in the ordinance that are, that's going to be forthcoming if you should approve this agreement. It's also further defined in the agreement itself. The agreement lasts until substantial completion of the Library Commons. That's a term of art, but basically it means everything is done, except the punchless items, and you can use the parking. At that point, the temporary displacement. At that point, the temporary displacement is relieved because the parking is open. Or until, I believe, I put an outlier, 2025. That's arbitrary number, because we certainly hope it'll be done prior to that. But we wanted to have an outlier, so things would terminate, not go on in perpetuity. Staff recommends that you approve the agreement.
Any questions for Kevin on this particular item?
If I hear no questions, I'll motion for the approval of the cooperative agreement for temporary construction easement.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Juan and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And a huge thank you to Kevin. I know there's one more item related, but he took on the lion's share of working kind of with the county, with Lydig rounding all the cats and came up with this, so much to Kevin's credit, we're here to get that done tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item T is our municipal code amendment for Chapter 10.20 Parking Zones. Kevin, go ahead.
This would be performing the promise set forth in the agreement, which is adopting an ordinance that would change your at-grade on-street parking on West Broadway, South Third Street, and Myrtle Street as set forth in the proposed ordinance to create basically a government parking zone for the exclusive use of the county. And they would coordinate with the city of coming up with a permit system. We've done this before in other contexts, mainly areas near the school, the high school, which it's residential parking, so this is not reinventing the wheel. And then these areas for the term of the ordinance, which again is effective until January 1, 2025. Now, we would repeal this earlier if the substantial completion was done, but we just put that as an effective date. That's when it would be repealed automatically.
Questions for Kevin on this?
It'd be an honor to do the last motion of 2022. Been a pretty good year. Look forward to '23, so that would be ordinance 3864.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Gary. That was very eloquent. Right, motion by Gary and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. That completes our agenda items for 2022, although knock on wood, in case we call you back. With that, I'll ask our city attorney if there's need for an executive session this evening.
There is not, enjoy your holidays.
So with that, we are going to be adjourned at 8:13. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.